All right.
Okay, good evening, everybody. It is 7:08 PM on Wednesday, May 19, 2021. We are going to do the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag. And the United States of America.
States of America.
And to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, John, you can do roll call.
Okay, Kathy Fawcett.
I'm here.
George Dukic.
Here.
Mark Kane.
Present.
Amo Burak.
Here.
David Maciosi.
Here.
Solicitor Riconis. And tonight for K L H Engineers, we have Scott Groom.
Here.
And John, of course, is there too. Okay, next is, did we get any minutes or is that going to be waiting until next month?
We will do that next month.
Okay, that sounds good. So we'll go on to addressing anybody, citizens to the commission. Is there anybody out there that wants to talk to us?
Sandy, do you have anything?
Okay, well, if there's no discussion.
She's not, I can't hear her, but up there she is.
No, I have, I'm gonna wait to listen. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, we are going to talk about the pet ordinance tonight. The other thing I'd like to try to bring up, and I did find some information, but I will give it to everyone over the next week or so for about windmills ordinance as well. But for now, we're going to talk about the dog ordinance or the animals. Any discussion on that at this point? Now, I know Matt sent out some samples of other things we could look at. We unfortunately got it late, so I know myself, I haven't had an opportunity to read them all thoroughly and through them. So what we can do is just go through what we feel that there might be some issues tonight. Does that make sense to everyone?
Yeah, and I apologize. John and I had some technical difficulties. I was sending the emails to him to distribute to the commission, and it wasn't bouncing back to me, but it also was not going through to him. So there was a little bit of a delay because we couldn't figure out what was going on. It turns out that the email, I had all, I had all the samples in one email, and apparently that was either too big for my server or too big for his server. So when I broke them up into separate emails, they finally went through, but it was, it was late in the hour. So I do apologize for that technical difficulty.
Okay, but for now, does anybody have?
Those are just some samples of things. I didn't, I didn't intend for us to either copy those, or I figured that if there were provisions in there that we liked, we could certainly incorporate them, you know. The one from Bethel, I included that one, but I didn't really care for that one. It was, it was a very strict licensing procedure. I don't know that we, John, I don't think we do that now, and I don't know that we want to get into that business of making everybody that gets a new pet register it, but it seems like a lot of work.
That, yeah, that, that, I don't think we would be able to handle that at the office. And, you know, one of the other things we do need to look at is, is our, I don't think I included it in the email, but it might be part, you know, it may be part of the main one I listed. If you remember Matt, a couple years, several years ago, before you became a solicitor, they did a licensing of cat, a cat ordinance, feral cat ordinance, and part of the ordinance we adopted still lists licensing, but there's no, they amended it, but didn't take out some sections of it. And just like our current one has conflicts in two sections on number of animals.
Okay, so I think, I think first off, the thing that we need to correct is the number issue. That, that one's an obvious one. So, so we can do that one. I think in terms of the licensing, I only included that because it was something different. I was researching different ordinances, and I thought that was interesting for a discussion topic. But again, I, at least myself, don't think it's something we want to get into the business of a strict licensing procedure. So you can probably disregard that one. I think it's. On the licensing.
Greg, do you have any comments on like the, I know we really haven't had a chance to read it or anything yet, but the, you know, licensing and registering all your pets with the township.
I, I don't think we can handle that. I agree with Matt. There's, there's.
Yeah, I don't.
We can barely keep up with what we're doing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, but.
The only thing that, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I do really believe we should restrict the, the amount or the number.
Yeah, so I saw the city, I didn't include this one, but I did see the city of Pittsburgh, I believe, is five total animals. And what, what is ours currently, John?
One says four, and one says, one other section says five.
But you, that says five says you can also do an application for more, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the one that I have a little hiccup with. I think that can get out of control. You can have someone say, well, you know what, I want to have 20 dogs and five cats. So yeah, they're only allowed to have four animals, but as long as they, you know, register all the rest of them, then they can have them. That's kind of a hiccup.
I think we need to, you know, yes, put in a, you know, top tier number, because right before I left the office, we got a call today, and I got a chance to call the gentleman back that was complaining that a neighbor has, he thinks maybe eight, nine, or more dogs, you know, and they bark and, and they, they get out. I haven't followed up with the police yet to see if any of them have gotten out. But he's describing it was just kind of a nuisance and everything, having that many, many dogs there.
Now, now, the number itself, so, you know, the nuisance and the barking, it can be controlled in a different way, obviously. The number, see, I'm not, this is me personally. I, I have acreage, right? So myself, if I wanted to have more than four or five, I don't think I would be bothering anybody on my acreage. I don't really have neighbors, you know, so I, I think there are the exceptions. I think, you know, maybe based on some sort of.
We may, I see where you're going, Matt.
Yeah, I thought we had a section there that says if you have a certain amount of acreage, you would be exempt on how many dogs and cats you would have.
There is, under, that's in part of the one of the conflicting or conflicting provisions. It's under.
That's in number 403. It says in there, no more than five dogs or cats unless 50 or more acres.
Yeah.
And I think that's the Wilkes-Barre ordinance.
No, that's, in our ordinance, we have under 403, no, no person shall keep or allow to remain on any premise owned, leased, occupied, or otherwise controlled by them, a total of more than five dogs and/or cats in their household. This limitation shall not apply to persons owning 50 or more acres of land. So I think we could, we could adjust it per, per acreage, you know, it may not have to be 50. You could take it down to.
I have less than 50, but I, you know, I don't know.
I think if you have 10 acres or five acres, you know what, your house is probably not somewhere where you're going to annoy your neighbors.
Well, and the thing is, the news, the noise issue can be addressed through nuisance and the police, you know, so I don't, you know, I don't know that the, that part of it, you know, what are we really, that's what we're really trying to regulate, is noise.
Noise, well, a noise, and I think there are, you know, some people that have gone a little overboard. I mean, I love animals, but, you know, I think, you know, I've had five dogs and I couldn't do six, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Um. Just for the record, I looked up the kennel licensing regs on the Pennsylvania Department of Agriculture's website, and there's actually an annual license for people that have a kennel license, but shockingly, it's 26 dogs starting at. So just keep that in mind while we're talking about numbers.
Okay, they changed it then, because it used to be 23.
But that's to apply for a kennel license for the state.
Right. I'm saying for us, for people that, you know, if you're going to set a, a number, I mean, I think we should say, this is the cutoff, and then from this point, you know, we're going to consider a kennel, maybe, or you'd have to go and get a kennel license or something.
That's a good point. I think one of those ordinances that I sent did address something like that, if I recall. So that might be something we can pull from.
Just if you, you set the number, it's just after that number, it should be considered, I think, like kenneling dogs, maybe.
Yeah, and just throwing this out there, as, as we work on defining this, Matt, we're going to have to make sure that we just look at our zoning too, because I know there is a kennel section.
Well, Matt, you're.
With setbacks and requirements.
Matt, you're in forward township, right, for the solicitor?
I am the solicitor in forward, yeah.
Don't they, what do they have for, like Bryce is, is over there. What do they have related for them? Is there anything for that?
No, because their zoning ordinance has not been updated since 1988. I get, I get letters from the county all the time telling me to update their ordinance, and the supervisors have not yet charged me with that, with that fun task. So their, their stuff is completely outdated, and I mean, if they have, they have a zoning ordinance, I'd say, George, it's probably, it's like 15 or 16 pages long, so it's, it's very basic. So there, it's kind of, it's kind of the Wild West over there a little bit.
One, one last thing in closing, and this is my techy side, and I sent John this link, and I could probably send it out to everybody in this chat, but.
I forward it to everybody, George, right before the meeting.
John, that is just an Adobe lookup. I mean, it's a very simple thing to build where we can take all of our ordinances, once they're done, and put them in Adobe, and publish them more or less like in a volume, and put them on your websites as a real quick lookup. And then when we start talking about things where there's conflicts, you can use the database to search for, for conflicts and queries down the road to save time for like flipping through papers.
We already pay for that though, don't we, through general code?
Yeah, we have, you can search anything on our e-code. You can do, if you do, and like, and I believe it's called an advanced search.
Okay.
Yeah, you can search by keywords.
Yeah.
We pay a company to do that already. So yeah, exactly. And I.
Okay. All right, so yeah, but George, I like your idea though. I do like that. Hey, real quick too, hate to bring up about chickens, forgive me folks, but we have a conflict on that as well. I don't know if you knew that. Under our chicken ordinance, it was saying about 40,000 square feet, you'd have about five chickens, and under the animal ordinance, it has 10. And I'm trying to find the section on the animals where I saw that.
Well, I think if it's, if it's anything, the chicken one may not have made it. That was just, what, two years ago, Matt?
Yeah.
It may not, we maybe do for an e-code update, because we do that every so often. I know some things got pushed last, pushed back a little bit last time, because we finally codified our zoning into the e-code, and that was a rather expensive bill. I know the chicken ordinance did have the clause, anything that contradicts that is, what's the word, Matt?
Yeah, well, just, I just want to give you. Okay, but it's on page two, two, two nine, number two, where it states that, and I even highlighted it, where it has, where in, in, in no event show you have more than 10 poultry birds in a 40,000 square foot or more area. And of course, that's almost identical to the chicken ordinance, same thing. In the event, there shall be no more than five poultry birds that are permitted on a 40,000 square foot area. So there's definitely a discrepancy between the two.
Yeah, but like I was saying, I think when we amended the zoning, it had the clause that anything that's in conflict would be rescinded or no longer void.
Yeah, the issue here is that the, the two ordinances here did not have, the second one did not have one that said, if this is in conflict with any prior ordinances, then it will basically supersede.
Okay, but I mean.
Yeah, it probably will be okay when they do the update through general code.
Right, when we do the update, we can bring and change that and revise it to where it should be, but I just wanted to bring that up.
George, going back to your thing about the kennel license, yeah, I found in the Wilkes-Barre one that I sent you, it says that it basically, you're not allowed to keep more than seven, but it says this section does not apply to any premises for which a kennel license has been obtained. So maybe we come up with something similar to that.
I agree with that, and one final closing point on that is I think we need to equate the kennel license to also our zoning ordinances, because I think zoning wise, is there some requirements for kennels or no, it's residential?
There already is. That's what John was saying. We'll have to look at where those are permitted right now. So.
Yeah, that's why, that's why I brought up to Matt that when we do this, we'll make sure that we're not going to create any new conflicts with the zoning, or, you know, if at the time, maybe it's, it's the time to change that, you know, the zoning to meet with the new ordinance or something.
Right. Yeah, I was gonna say, George, your book, when you, John gave us all those binders, those green binders, it has the zoning ordinance in there, and it does have about that. So there is a section in there.
Okay, I'll look it up.
Okay. Anything else at this point, right now?
I think, I think just the big thing, right?
Oh, wait a minute, real quick. I, I, I know they were mentioning different things, but one thing that might be a good idea also to keep registration of is, I know this sounds kind of bizarre, is skunks, people do have skunks as pets. I thought you do have to license those too through the state, if you do have one. Am I right, Matt, or no? At one time, I was told you had to license them.
I, I have no idea. My, my skunks are all kept illegally, so I don't know. I have a kennel.
Well, my skunks are wild, and they can stay wild. As long as they're not in my yard. But I actually, I knew people years ago who actually had them as pets in their home.
If I could.
When I was a little girl, I almost got a skunk as a pet.
If I could just throw into, while we're looking at this, you know, we're kind of focusing on dogs, but, you know, let's not just narrow, keep in mind, let's not just narrow ourselves just to dogs. I'm, I think we're going to have to expand, you know, cats, because I'm pretty sure there's houses in the township that have, you know, Lord only knows how many cats, and they're a whole nother issue altogether. But I think we need to look at limiting, because there's other things that are domestic pets now. So I think we really need to look at that a little bit more and say, you know, you can't have, you know, four dogs, six cats, and, you know, three pot-bellied pigs, you know.
Well, God bless you, John, because be careful what you wish for, you might get it, because you're going to be the one that has to enforce all those. So good luck.
I get the short end of the, I get the short end of the stick no matter what.
Hey, John, just so you know, I'm seeing, I see a trend in Fayette County where those miniature donkeys are becoming very popular animals on people's properties down there. They're popping up everywhere I see.
Greg, would you please kick him out of the meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, I've heard it a few times, the term, and it scares me. I've had people call asking for zoning on animals and different things, and they've used the term hobby farm. And it just scares me. I, yeah, hobby farm. I think it's somebody that has a hobby that's farming, but, but you don't have a farm. So I'm thinking, there's somebody in Mount Vernon that wants a cow, you know, to go along with their chickens for the eggs.
Not me. Yeah, I mean, we definitely have to make some restrictions on that kind of stuff. It's, it's getting a little crazy. But yeah, John, I agree with you on the cats. I, I, I know people who have like 10 cats, and I, I can almost guarantee you, most of them are not registered or anything, and that's just, that's kind of scary.
Yeah.
And then on top of that, on top of that, if they're being let loose, I know myself, I'm not, I'm, I love animals, and I do like cats, but I really don't want them in my yard. And I mean, I'll have them perch on my, my window sill and stuff, so I have to chase them away. Of course, my dog does a good job at that too. But yeah, I mean, we really have to discuss that, you know, people have to realize, if you want to have cats, you can't have them roaming all over the neighborhood. I mean, I have a neighbor who has a cat that she just lets it out and do whatever, and it's always in my backyard, and she has a rabbit, same deal. She bought a rabbit, and she just lets it roam all over the neighborhood. So.
Has the chicken issue calmed down there?
Oh, no, we will talk later. No, 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 no. You don't, you don't want me to get into that right now.
Okay.
Kathy, most of these, talking of those personal responsibility issues, it's not necessarily things we can put into an ordinance. Is that correct, Matt? Like, you have to take care of.
Don't get me wrong, I'm okay with the rabbit and stuff. I mean, I mean, it's a cute rabbit, but it's not my rabbit. But it's in our yard all the time. I mean, it's a cute rabbit. I just don't understand why they got it. They're not going to leave it in their own yard, in their house. I mean, it just doesn't make any sense to me, but whatever. But cats, I do have an issue with. I'm sorry. It's like dogs. If you're going to have a dog, you have to be responsible, and that's how, that's how I feel about it. I could be wrong. Hello?
I think, I think at this point, if I can make a suggestion, I know you guys just got those ordinances from me. If you want to take a look through, and maybe if you could just shoot John and I an email with just bullet points. You don't even have to like state exactly what, but if you want to state like, we should have a limit, but anything beyond the limit should be governed by a kennel license or considered a kennel, like bullet point that, just shoot us an email with some thoughts, and that way we can kind of go through and start at least working something up with.
Okay, now, when you say about kennels.
John and I are going to address the number issue, the conflict issue. We're, you know, we'll have to decide, are we going to go with four or five?
Hey, can I, can I throw this out here too? We had an issue, and John, you know about this, I, I told you, where people, and this is down the bike trail, and I actually caught the individual, who will dump animals down there. Does this fall under the animals ordinance in our township, or does this go into something else? The reason I'm saying that is, what I was told by the officers is that, yes, they finally caught the individual who dumped off two cats down at the bike trail, but they basically got slapped with a wrist, because there's really nothing enforceable in a township. Is there anything we can do to maybe to stop this by maybe increasing the fine or make them do community service or something?
I don't know what that is exactly. I mean, what we're talking about is people who want to have animals and how they're, how we regulate people who want to have animals as far as.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, disposing of animals and dumping them, I think that's more, yeah, I don't, I don't know what the laws are on that or what the police can do about that.
We don't really have much of an ordinance, the way the cops told me, and I don't know if this goes under the animals ordinance, or does this go under something else?
There may be something, we may, we may have to look or just do a little research on it. I'm sure there's probably something under the state law about just abandoning an animal. Granted, it's probably, you know, you get a non-traffic citation and you pay a fine, but, you know.
Yeah, I wasn't sure if there's anything we can put as an enforceable, little bit stringent on here to kind of, you know, tell people, don't do this type of thing. But, but anyhow, that's, I just wasn't sure if this went under the animal ordinance or whether this is something totally different.
Well, throw it, throw it in the email in a bullet point, and John and I will, you know, take it for items for consideration and see where it fits.
All right, that sounds good.
Hey Kathy, I just want, Kathy, I want to bring up something about that. I know people that abandoned like wild animals down there, groundhogs and raccoons, but I just want to bring your attention, a few years ago, somebody left an alligator out down there in Boston. And I know people are dropping off snakes too. In Florida, it's a major problem.
Oh, yes, yes, it is. Well, that, that, that's a different story with Florida. It was due to a hurricane. But in our case here, I remember back several years ago, there was a little pet shop down on McKeesport Road there, and I remember seeing signs, they're selling baby alligators. And I thought to myself, how can they do that? They, they get big. They don't stay baby.
That's right.
They get old. So that becomes a big issue, but that's another story too. But anyhow, so at this point in time, do we want to just, I guess, read all this and digest it and come up with some suggestions to give to Matt and John, and then revisit this next month? Is that okay with everyone, or do we want to continue with the discussion?
I think the best thing was what Matt suggested, you know, look it over. Have, has anybody has any thoughts, comments, concerns, you know, shoot them into an email to me, and Matt will go over it, you know, and we'll look at different things, you know, that way you may, you may come up with something or see something that we, we may have, you know, overlooked or something.
I agree. I don't have a problem with that. Is everybody in agreement with that?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I have one question, Kathy, for John, or Matt, I guess, as well, and Greg. Is there any number of pets that you're concerned with?
What do you mean by number of pets?
Well, the, the topic of discussion mainly surrounded, you know, four or five. Is there anything else that, you know, that has come up as a concern?
Well, yeah, I mean, I would like, I, we need a top limit number, you know, and, you know, I, I myself would be comfortable with five, you know, because if you have a mix of pets, that's, that's fine, or a mix of sizes, you know.
I agree.
You know, I think, but well, like I said before, I think we need to make sure we cover up, don't just, you know, narrow, make sure that whatever definition we put in for domestic pet or animal matches anything that may, we might, you know, somebody might have as a pet. You know, it's hard to think of what the next pet craze is going to be, but you know. And then just, you know, kind of go from there, and we'll, you know, as we go through, we'll look over some of the other sections as far as, you know, care and maintenance and everything, and I think all those we have are fairly, are fairly good, that what we have right now. Care, maintenance, and them being a nuisance. We can review them, but I think most of those are fairly, fairly good.
Yeah, I think, John, I agree with that, John. Like you and I can, we'll clean up the conflict issue. I think five, I was going to say five as well, mirrors the city. The mix of animals can be good that way. We'll address, well, you and I can address something with the lot size, whether we want to be able to have an option to expand that based on lot size or not. The kennel issue that George brought up, so we can address all that, and I think the, I think the commission can then look at our existing ordinance, look at the ones that I provided to you, see if there's anything in there that you want to incorporate. Hey, you may come back and just say, hey, what we have other than the conflicts is, is just fine. Or you may say, we want to tweak this. I think the point is, if we're going to make changes, let's do them all at once. That's the, that's the most cost-effective way to do it. So let's look at what we have. John and I will clean up that conflict and bring something back to you, and then in the meantime, if you see something in one of these other ordinances or anywhere else that you want us to incorporate, shoot us a bullet point over in an email, and we'll take care of it.
Okay, now, I know that the state also, I guess, updated their pet, I guess, for dogs. Am I correct on that, Matt? About how size kennels should be and everything of that nature?
Honestly, I don't, I haven't got any legislative update on it, but that doesn't mean that.
I thought they had one a few years ago, about that you had to have a certain size of kennel. It had to be like above a ground or whatever. I'm gonna have to look into that.
I think they changed, if I recall, I think they changed something on the, the chaining up your dog outside. There were changes to that in how you're able to do that, and how long the chain, how long the chain has to be and different things like that, but I don't recall anything on kennel size, but I could be wrong.
Yeah, and I think, Kathy, what you're referring to is I think the state's requirements to get a issue, the kennel license issued from the state. So if that's a business you're in, you're required to have a kennel license. But I don't think Pennsylvania, they, you know, if you want to have 150 dogs, I don't think Pennsylvania has a horse in that race to say you can't have it, but if you're, you know, selling them or something, or something commercial, then I think it may, may turn you into having to have a kennel license, I think.
Well, at one time, they did have, it was 23 dogs. If you had 23 dogs or more, you were considered a business, and you had to be licensed. That was back at the late 90s, early 2000s. Believe me, I know that for a fact. So, but I don't know if it's changed since then, but neither, nevertheless, those are things we do need to look into, just to play it safe. But anyhow, are we done right now with this topic, and that we'll come to discuss it further next month?
Yes.
Maybe we could come to a resolution possibly next month with this?
We hope.
Yes, I hope so too. So, okay, if that's the case, can we move forward? Is everyone all right with that?
Yes.
I don't hear any objections.
Okay, all right, because I need to get some answers. Next would be, I did mention about windmills. I think that will be coming up down the road. I could be wrong, but somebody someday might want to put one up, you know, for energy and everything else, which I understand. But I think we need to put some kind of restrictions and some, something in place so somebody doesn't build a 75-foot windmill on a property that's, you know, 70 by 125, and it's extremely noisy, and it's, you know, big, and, you know, whatever. So I did find some information through the Pennsylvania Department Protection, DEP, and that, so I can't, I'll be giving it to John, and he'll send it off to everybody, but please start looking and thinking about that, thinking about what we can do in a way of. But please start looking and thinking about that, thinking about what we can do in a way of presenting an ordinance. Matt, if you could find anything at all on any other municipalities on that, that would be wonderful. Um, but, um, I just think that it might be something we should discuss.
I think Kathy too, there might've been some stuff I sent out last year to planning, maybe?
I think you did, and I.
Solar, I think you also sent something out of that.
Oh, that's right, that's right, the solar, yeah. But John, I'll get.
Maybe you can dig that up.
I'll get with you next week. I, I did find some several places and I will get you those emails and, um, websites and you can send it off to everybody.
Okay.
But, um, but I think we should be discussing and thinking about this. So start, everybody start thinking about it. And what you think would be a good starting point for it as well, so that we can move forward with that as, you know, in the, in the future and getting something written up and given to the commissioners. Does that sound like a good deal? Hello?
Yes.
Yeah, that sounds good, guys.
Don't fall asleep on me, people.
No response, response Kathy.
Okay, thank you. Um, so that's about all I have. John, is there anything that you need to bring up for us?
I just have one I, I'd like to bring up and I, actually it's probably a little more of a question for Matt. Um, if you remember Matt, a couple of years ago, we, uh, amended the notification section of our zoning for the certified mail. Um, most of those come back unclaimed. You know, and you know, they call, they, I, I have a letter in there that explains this is not a subpoena, it's not an order. It confuses them horribly. They get it first class and certified. Um, I'm wondering if we could maybe revisit that and look at just going with maybe post office, I believe it's proof of mailing or something.
I, I think instead of the planning commission, I think that's one for the commissioners because they're the ones that instituted that whenever that person built that deck or whatever, that's what started that whole thing. So if you want to, I think that's a, that's a good topic for them to.
Okay.
Yeah, I know what you're talking about, John, because because I, I got the mail, I got the one letter from you from the township, and then I got another certified letter, the same identical thing. And I, I couldn't understand the reasoning behind that.
Because we have to send it regular and certified. So that's, that's the way they, that was done to make sure that people got notified. Because there was, there was this funny issue where somebody in close proximity says that they didn't know it was even happening until it was already approved and beyond any sort of challenge period. So the commissioners put that in place in order to try and protect those neighbors within a certain distance, you know, making sure that they had.
Well, Matt, why don't they just do the certified and that's it? Why do they have to bring both? I mean.
Because people were complaining. Can, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, people were complaining at zoning hearing boards that they got certified mail. If they weren't there, they work, it's hard to get your certified mail if you're not there to get it when you, when, you know, the mailman comes. So the zoning hearing board said, would I please send it regular mail also? And, you know, depending upon the number of hearings or where they're at. I mean, if it's on Fallen Timber Road, it's not so bad. But if I have one in Mount Vernon, or I have one coming up by Sandy for this month, you'll be getting two things from me, Sandy. Um, where the houses are a lot more packed, the volume goes really up. And you can ask Greg, last month I had 10 zoning hearings and I don't remember the total number of certified mail and regular mail we had to send out. But I mean, it was kind of, I needed the whole office to pitch in to try and get these done.
And John, and John, we, we spent $1,200 for that meeting and certified.
Yeah, I, I think that's something to, to address with the commissioners. Yeah, because I, I think we got to figure that out. I mean, 1,200 bucks is, that's crazy.
Yeah, and I think with the proof of mailing, it's a post office form or whatever, or certification that, you know, it came through the mail.
Yeah.
You know. So I, I was on a zoning webinar a little while ago and they, they highly recommended that. I mean, as far as efficient and cost savings, the proof of mailing, it's not the same, I understand, but, uh, they recommend it as a solution.
Yeah, and I just did ones for May's meeting and unfortunately I only have one hearing. But, and it's, uh, someone on Gross Drive, but I had to send out about 50.
Yeah.
Notices.
Well, let's, let's address it on the seventh with the commissioners.
Okay, uh, anything else? Anybody else have anything to address? Nothing? Okay, I need a motion to adjourn. Somebody, anybody?
I'll make that motion to adjourn, Kathy.
I'll second that motion.
Email seconds, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, okay, we are officially done at 7:44. Have a great evening, everyone.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Have a good night, take care. Bye.